Good evening. The time is now six forty-five. I'd like to call this Town and Plainfield Pension Board Meeting to Order for December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and ask for oral call.
Art Gaggen.
Kevin Cunningham. And we do have Christie, who is, uh, won't be here because of illness, as well as Scott Gardner, who won't be here because of illness. Item C, to approve the minutes of the pension meeting date in November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
The only question I have, and Dean has it, under item one, number two, the pension of Carol Davis, I had down that, did I have? I had down the Dean made the motion, and I had seconded it. You have that, Dean? Yes. So that correction. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for twelve, uh, for fourteen, November, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do you have the discussion?
Yeah. Uh, on item, and one in section two, the dollar.
Yeah, the dollar amounts to a match, so I have to go back and look at what that really really is. I believe it's seventeen oh seven eighteen, so I will do a correction once I revise the, uh, the other.
It is seventeen oh seven eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This should've been here for a long time. Okay, so I can make those two corrections. I amend your motion to those two.
I amend the motion to add that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. On to new business, consider an act on pension distribution as requested. Now, we have another longstanding employee from the Board of Education, who has put his request in for retirement. So Ronald Lucier, uh, started working for the Board of Education in the October twentieth of two thousand and nine. Uh, date of termination would be January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Looking for a pension payout starting in February first of two thousand and twenty-three. I will say that if you have your paperwork with you, you'll note there's something different in this one. This is a request, if you take a look down, third from the bottom there, it says a hundred percent contingent annuity option of twelve hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-four cents. So the request from Ronald Lucier is to go through that process, so we'd have to have a motion which reflects that. And I do have such motion. If you so choose to approve, he'll be motion to approve the monthly pension payments for Ronald Lucier to be paid for in a hundred percent contingent annuity option of twelve hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-four cents, starting February first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Um, I'm interested that the attorneys from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one were happy.
I believe it would be something the Board of Education would have to answer that. He had multiple responsibilities, multiple roles, he gets paid differently for each one. Um, so that would be a question to be asked of the Board of Education or Ronald Lucier himself directly. Unfortunately, nobody's here to ask or answer that question. I think it's a clarification for the next pension meeting. That's okay with you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it's interesting. We necessarily see people take pay cut.
I don't think so much as a pay cut, because if you take a look, two thousand and twenty was eleven, hundred and eleven, four ninety-two. Two thousand and twenty-one, uh, went down a little bit, but I think that was based on, again, roles and responsibilities. And then it went up a little bit in the next year. There's also contractual issues to... Do we have a motion? And we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As that is the last item for the pension, um, except I would ask to, uh, add item number two, motion to propose the pension board two thousand and twenty-three meeting dates. Here, I better get in our motion.
Item two, two thousand and twenty-three meeting dates.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just at that time, we do that housekeeping. I will share with you what I have proposed dates.
On the October one, so I think it's Tuesday, right?
Uh, I'll go with my minute.
Yeah, I remember correctly. Yeah, it's on Tuesday, nine, I think.
All right, so it's going to be October, date going to have listed here as a pension as a ten. Okay, I have a lot of plumbers days in there. There was only one other office.
Yeah, that was on December, isn't it? Second meeting. Make a motion, accept the, uh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting schedule. Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 There it is.
Right. Uh, and that case, it brings up to item E, adjournment, obtain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six fifty-three. For the select meeting to order for December twelfth, and ask that you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance, to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, our foundation, our God, and the discipline, liberty, justice, and honor. Thank you. Oral call.
Art Gaggen.
Kevin Cunningham, and Scott is not here, he may be called, saying he was ill. Item C, approve meeting minutes from the board of select meeting from eleven twenty-eight.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes for eleven twenty-eight, twenty-two.
And I will second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, public comment. Okay, hearing none, going to item E, old business.
Wait, yes, I had public comments.
Okay. And your name?
Uh, I am Jelena Two. I just like to put up bat boxes on the conservation committee, and that's all I want to do. So the fact that I'm a libertarian versus a Democrat or Republican seems to me inconsequential, and I hope you had a chance to review the charter from last week. I think it's very natural to say that anywhere we would want to put up bat boxes to help the bats survive, and also possibly have children plant seeds for pollinators, like considering the butterfly population is being hurt. You've got two open seats on conservation that they could have. This is a bat box, but we can do better ones. This is actually, uh, I can get materials pretty much for free. I, I think we can probably have community events where kids and their parents can come build bat boxes, and it can be like, let's like have bats come back into the community. Like, I really am not all that more interested in anything politically, except I'd like to do something to help with, um, bats and pollinators. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Uh, yes, Gabriel Tony Dorian. I think, um, based on the fact that there's hardly anyone of us in Rome, that it seems to belie a bit of a problem, because I think when it comes to town politics, people should be invited and welcomed in to participate and do better stuff whenever they can, although I, I must say, I was, I think a bit put off by the fact that somehow the last meeting is somehow required interpretation of the town charter supposedly. And I'm just, I'm just recalling from memory here. The last time we had some sort of weird attorney opinion issue came come up, it was in relation to like a seventh seat on the Board of Finance, which we should've had a special election, we didn't. Uh, we, we should've, and the town attorney had an opinion that, it turns out, wasn't correct. I can recall another instance where we had a town attorney opinion, this was years ago, it had to do with a board event member that was unlawfully ousted from receipt. Turns out, the superior court judge agreed with me that the town attorney opinion was wrong. Uh, I can recall another instance where the charter said the town couldn't sue itself, and, um, we, we charged ahead for better or worse, and, and we disregarded the charter. You know, but, but the point is this, if we're, if we're at a point where we're using the town charter to find a way to discourage a commission from having a quorum, such that it can meet, such that a commission can, uh, help out pollinators, or help out eight out of nine bat species that are endangered in Connecticut, or, or hand out trees, or work with, say, all the other boards to find grants that would somehow, I don't know, perhaps help, like rehabilitate interoiled? I mean, where are we? I mean, if, if, if that's where we're going. And, and might I add, um, it, it reaches a point of absurdity, and I'll just give you an example. What, let's, let's just say, forget conservation commission, let's just say inland wetlands got frustrated, and they had a difference in opinion, and the entire inland wetlands committee just up and quit. And, you know, let's just hypothetically go a step further and say the Republicans didn't have a big bench of people, and they couldn't find someone in full committee. And let's also hypothetically suppose the Democrats had the same problem. Well, who are you left with? You're left with anybody that would want to show up. So according to the problem that was hypothetically raised last week, that would hypothetically mean that no inland weapons application could go forward. That would essentially mean that anyone who needed inland weapons, like detonation or application, couldn't get it done. We would fundamentally shut down the business of the town. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just going to put this out there, usually, like, nine times out of ten, when someone asks for an attorney opinion, they're asking because there's something they want to do, and they want to find a way to do that thing that they're looking to do. So what I would propose is, I think we've reached a point based on the lack of people filling Democratic or Republican benches, and the lack of people that are in this room who otherwise would be in that, we could perhaps, you know, change that and encourage participation and not have all these vacancies by saying, welcome in, if you have something to give, participate in, it would've been great. I mean, this should be very easy, and, you know, it's that simple. So I say, let's do the right thing, let's fully seize. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Agent Paulson, eighteen First Street. Uh, I just wanted to throw out the idea, I don't know what the attorney has, um, offered as his opinion, yes, along the question that Dan here is mentioning, but it may be possible to point with these individuals, that's alternates, because there are two positions, alternate positions, there's no reference in the charter to alternate positions, uh, and whether they are required in fact to hold the same political positions as the previous. And there were no alternate members that were holding seats, uh, in the last one year. So, because I was pointing, I wasn't alternate, I became a full member, so it moved that as a option, uh, that I'd like to, for those not knowing what the attorney's issue is.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Uh, just one more thing I had. I, I am admittedly skeptical about this particular prospective attorney opinion. I, I would like to see it in writing. I, of course, have a, a, uh, interesting, uh, history, having seen this particular law firm's opinion. Again, this was the law firm that decided the town charter didn't matter, the town couldn't sue itself, so I, I am perspect, I am prospectively interested in seeing this opinion in writing. I'm interested in seeing if this particular opinion is going to stand by that opinion. I am prospectively interested if this attorney is like that certain of, of the way things are. Because unfortunately, I think as we, we have all agreed, like, I know Kevin, you and I were in, in court one day, where there was like a case involving like the town charter, this petition for a referendum, that started to with the town attorney opinion. That town attorney, you know, did not stand by the opinion. It resulted in this weird case, and the argument that was eventually made was, no, the real version of the town charter, as it would turn out, was not one that's on the website, but it's one that was marked up by a guy who conveniently was deceased by years prior. So I am infinitely curious to see within the mix of the history of town attorney opinions, you know, where, where this all fits in, and how it could logically make an exist.
I would like to put up bat boxes.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Going to item E, which is old business, discuss an act on appointments for the Conservation Commission, and in your packet you have received the, the whole packet should have your charter. It should also have information there from ordinance, and also should have information there from the question to the attorney for Shushma Shapiro. Actually, both attorneys weighed in on this, but just want to, if we had a time to read through. So I can read from the town, the town charter, uh, section seven, five, terms of office, any vacancy or any appointment. Pointed board or commission from whatever cause arriving shall be filled by the appointment of the board of select for the unexpired portion of the term vacated within thirty days of such vacancy. Any such vacancy shall be filled by the appointment of a member of the same political party as the person vacating the office in the event said person was affiliated with political party. To, just for clarification, the two people that, um, did resignation, one was Democrat, one was Republican. It does also include a list of the, uh, ordinance for the establishment of the Conservation Commission, and then, of course, the opinion from the attorney. Right.
So.
that legally establishes the manner in which vacancies and appointments are filled. Uh, the legislative body of the town further acts through that ordinance, which provides also for the vacancy be filled by the board of select. The reference to the state statutes unnecessary as the organic law is of the town is clear, and that would be the town charter. It doesn't matter at this point if the, um, what we deem as correct or not correct in the town charter is what the town charter stands at at this point. I mean, it could be something that a future charter revision commission could, could wrap around all of item seven, uh, section seven, and look to do some restructuring of that.
Definitely is to be done, but this Conservation Commission's not included.
Right.
It's not listed in there.
Excuse me, we're having a meeting right now, so.
Good question.
Yep.
It was mentioned that they have a form, they do have a form.
Yeah, we're three now, yes.
We do. Okay. Um, the alternates, the three alternates, there are none?
Correct.
We don't know what, what they were.
We don't know what they were either, because there's no establishment of the Conservation Commission itself even listed in section seven.
I believe this one has, or did have, unaffiliated, it was on two, and I wonder how that happened. This is one that, you know, it's definitely, I'd rather see it filled.
I'm looking to follow up what the charter says.
You know, we might not have all the alternates, so.
I don't think, yeah, there's no, there's no.
Libertarian, so. And, and that's the other thing, too, is if you put them on, and they vacate, you're going to have a heck of a time trying to find a libertarian for them. There's only six in town, so that'd be a little hard.
If there's a chance that we can discuss this with the next charter revision commission for future evaluation, that would be fine.
How long does a person need if they switch their party? How long before you could get on?
If you could just like.
If they so choose, change to Democrat or Republican, to fill one of those issues.
I would believe that follows same as voting rights, ninety days.
May I ask, what if somebody's not really?
I'm sorry, we're still delivering.
So society, the decisions.
What kind of motion do you want?
Basically, I just take no action.
Yeah, I don't want to go into the charter.
So at this point, I would say.
I don't want to make a motion to take no action at this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just for follow-up, I, I really do think this is something the charter has to be fixed, because as you were stating earlier, it's difficult to find people to get onto a board permission.
Charter's an option, we all know that.
We follow the charter?
No, we don't.
Okay. Not going to have discussion back and forth either, no.
Okay, and just for reference, I did ask Matt rated, I know that where elected positions went and got appointed, but we found out that those appointments were vacancies completely, and nobody ran for those positions, so.
When elected positions, yeah, appointed positions are a little different. Okay. We can move into the next item, which is, I'd met, the new business.
I'm walking out, he's ready to get down.
New business is to consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax elect totaling three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-one cents for Hyundai Leasing Titling Trust.
I'd marshal the first request of three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-one cents to the tax part.
Um, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two, discuss an act on awarding a contract to Quinn Ecological to conduct environmental studies and develop the report and findings for Zero Kate Downing. Zero Kate Downing Road is the, is the new business item two. Um, Jordan has been working to get more experience on what goes on within that site. So the problem is that we have to have a survey for D, and that's what this, it's already been paid for, it's already just a matter of, uh, this is the, because you have to run for it. So this is the company that would be going forward, we just need to make motions so that they can, they will be the one forward. And again, this is another one of those situations where you try to reach out and find people who want to do it. This was the only company.
I'll make a motion to void the contract to Quinn Ecological to conduct environmental studies, develop the report, findings on Zero Kate Downing Road.
I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And I would also entertain a motion to add item number three to the agenda, to modify the board of select in, uh, regular meeting minutes, uh, to include location.
Make a motion to add item three.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we did the right thing, we voted on all of our, what are our dates? The problem was we forgot to put it in the motion to include, um, the location.
Pass the time, right?
Yeah. Times are all set, everything else is good. So we just look to make a motion to modify to include the location to be held at H Community at Plainfield.
So move.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and just a point for other, I received a letter from Lyons. The idea of, um, it does need to be moved off just, no matter what, it has to be moved off by about five feet, so the pathway doesn't interfere with where it's going to. Um, it wasn't, doesn't have anything to do with, as is stated here, uh, the disabilities, adaptability playscape. That doesn't have anything to do with that.
So is the car being moved to Musup?
Well, the idea was to move it to Musup so that they could have it in that park that, uh, that parking lot has a, uh, by the old sportsmen's. There's a, there's a grassy area there, and to move it there so that they can utilize it. Um, the problem with that particular, as we find out through all these follow-ups, that particular build, the building there, gazebo, is an eight-foot, eighteen-foot gazebo. That was built on-site, because fourteen feet is the maximum you can move over road routes. So by moving it on to site, um, they had some problems with the handrails being too short, they had a problem with the staircase had to be special built. Um, so all of those things in play, to try and move it over there, it might be difficult at best. The alternate would be, um, if we didn't move it at all, because it still may not be able to be moved, um, it could, depends on what's underneath and how it's set, and if it's movable. But we're not going to be disassembling it, be doing the roof altogether. So there's some issues there that we have to still walk our way through, but I will talk to the. talk to the executive committee from Lyons to discuss the whole situation a little further. In doing so, I also contacted the company that built it there and asked them, what if I wanted to put another one somewhere else? So a new one, the cost go like that size eighteen foot, which I believe is still a little big. Eighteen footer, they were going to give a discount price, so we're still talking $21,000. So we'd be looking to try to figure out something else, possibly getting donations, possibly working together with other groups to either build a smaller one or something like that. But again, I will follow up with the, with Lyons' lead executive. That was pretty much it. For other, we had, I believe, it would be a very successful Christmas tree lighting ceremony, the lights on the town hall, the ceremony itself, all the things that were played out, done very well. Nothing but compliments. Families were very happy with the fact they had food for the whole families, but I mean, you ought to buy something. So the only, my big glitches we're working on, we have a meeting tomorrow to do a follow up and a presentation as to what to do for the next year's event. That's pretty much it. It was done very well. I think everybody was happy with it. I don't know, I get a estimate of numbers, I said between 750, 800 people altogether that came through. I know they went through all the hot dogs and all the food very quickly, so all the hot dogs will last to go.
You say you had 500.
Yep. And that was it for. Motion, I'm the second. All in favor?
Aye.
723. Thank you. So there is one company that finally came through, it's Sopam Riley Rice from Rice Landscaping LLC. We have verified with the sewer department that they do have the monies and funds available for it.
We can tell you where it's coming from.
I am. Oh, they have it in their budget, but overtime.
Very complex, aren't they?
Yep. So at this time, any discussion? Hearing none, we entertain a motion to approve the Riley Rice LLC for the stone removal bid for the sewer department.
$52,200.
$52,200.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And at this time, we have no other business, so I would ask for entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question?
After meeting chart. Yeah, I didn't have public comment because it's a special meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.